You don't mind me showing I'm meeting today? Have our chief leaders in pledge allegiance, and I'd like to ask our senior manager Jim Anderson to say a prayer for us.
I pledge the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come here today and do your work. We ask that you lead us and guide us and make sound decisions for this city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I may ask all these meetings to think no commission for. First we have the consent agenda. I hope everybody's had a chance to look things over. We're on tape for the circuit, we can go ahead and get it done. I have a motion to bring. Got a motion, commission was there, we got a session from Commissioner Asbro. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Now at this time, we'd like to make a special recognition. I'd like to ask the state 1A baseball championship coach and teammates that are here to please come forward, please. We'd like to recognize you for the achievements you've done. First of all, let's go. Fine group of young men, fine group. Alright, at this time, gentlemen, normally I would read the proclamation, but I think it's fitting that it's time to have one of the son, uh, dad or one of the sons come and do it. Someone's been with you all year long through all the games, practices and everything. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. John Grantland to come up.
Sure. You and your team, I'm gonna read the proclamation from the city by the mayor. Whereas the Fort St. Joe senior high school baseball team known as the Tiger Sharks was led by head coach Ashley Summerlin, assistant pitching coach Travis Burge, and manager Brian Justice. And whereas during a great season, the team won against such rivals as Bluntstown, Bozeman, Liberty County, Madison County, and LeWatt Hitchcock. And whereas they defeated Liberty County eight to four and Bozeman twelve to two in the district tournament, defeated Freeport seven to two in the regional semifinals, and defeated Bozeman ten to nothing in the regional finals, went into the state 1A final four or final four championship with a sixteen win, twelve loss record. And whereas Tiger Sharks Josh Butts, Cameron Harmon, Kevin LaCivita, Jacob Kennedy, Kelvin Griffin, Elijah Hester, Andre Hornsby, John Austin G., Jaden Grantland, Davis Barnes, Kalen Butts, Matthew Costin, Chris Stockton, Bryce Register, Jacob Hopper, Kayden Terrell, Hunter Vandertoel, and Brandon Brandt, through grit and determination emerged to play in the class 1A state semifinals, defeating Bluntstown seven to three after a two-day rain delay, defeated Madison County four to nothing, are undisputably the 1A state baseball champions for Florida. And whereas we recognize not only the coaches, the team captains, and the entire team for their outstanding performance, it is fitting to also recognize the community as a whole for supporting our local high school sports program. Now therefore, I, James Bo Patterson, Mayor of the City of Fort St. Joe, along with the Fort St. Joe Board of City Commissioners, do hereby recognize the Fort St. Joe Junior/Senior High School Baseball Team for bringing home a 1A state championship. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and by the Fort St. Joe City Commission that the city celebrates the team and its fans and proclaim this week Tiger Shark Baseball Week. Proclaim this fifth day of June 2018.
Appreciate you, thank you very much. Your assistant coach.
Thank you.
Thank you for that standing seat. Gentlemen, I would like you to come one at a time, just state your names and I'll hand you one of these, is that possible?
Yes.
Alright, come on up, sir. Your name?
Davis Hornsby.
Davis Hornsby. Congratulations, sir.
JD Grantland.
JD Grantland, alright. Talk up, gentlemen, let everybody know who you are.
Chris Stockton.
Alright, Chris, you did a good job pitching. Good pitching job.
Kevin Zinn.
Alright, Kevin, good job. Good job, my man.
Josh Butts.
Alright, Josh.
Caleb Butts.
Caleb, how you doing, man? Thanks. Good job.
Andre Hornsby.
Alright, Hornsby.
John Austin G.
John Austin G., alright, man.
Jacob Hopper.
Jacob Hopper. Good job, Jacob.
Jacob Kennedy.
Jacob Kennedy. Good job, my man.
Brandon Brandt.
Alright, Brandon, good job.
Hunter Vandertoel.
Alright, Hunter, good job, my man.
Calvin Harmon.
Alright, Mr. Harmon, good job.
Calvin Griffin.
Calvin, good job.
Elijah Hester.
Elijah. Hey, old lefty.
Hey, buddy, I'm lefty too.
Nice to meet you, sir.
Good job. Is that everybody? Gentlemen, once again, we are very, very, very proud of you. Look forward to retreat. How about that? Can we go far? Can we do a retreat and one of them be back? Alright, thank you again, all of you. Alright, as I said, a great group of young men, we're all proud of them. Alright, next on the agenda, we got a special commission meeting, that's what we've already done, and now we got the Fort St. Joe re-advise.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to talk about the potential of CRA extension. I talked to the city attorney prior to our first meeting. It was a long, drawn-out, what I thought was the proper motion to make, but he advised differently, unless you explain?
Yes, I simply asked that Bill inquire with the commission as to whether or not they want to go forward, because it seems like, prior to me even, the city's bounced around. So if the city wants, Bill and I will work together for all, instead of having a long, drawn-out motion for all the steps that are required by the statute, just have the city tell us to go forward or don't. But if it's go forward, then Bill and I can work together and we'll be presenting things, whether it's to the PSJRA board, whether it's to the planning board, whether it's to the commission, we'll be presenting them if that's what the commission authorizes us to do. But I think an affirmative yes or no from the commission will be very helpful so Mr. Kennedy and I can go forward. And if it's yes, then I think Mr. Kennedy and I have worked out a plan. Mr. Kennedy and I spoke in the weeks leading up to this meeting about this issue. I spoke to Ms. Westmoreland with the CRA Association. So I think Mr. Kennedy and I can certainly move forward, but we need that authority from the city. And instead of making a long-winded motion before the board to say, one step at a time, and list out everything that we've got to do, if the city can just tell us what to do, then we'll be bringing forward the motions as we go.
It looks like it's basically a probably three, four-week process.
Can I give my opinion?
Go ahead.
I know we voted, the CRA board, DRA board voted, I believe it was unanimously back in August of seventeen, to move forward. I made a vote to move forward with that. Since then, the county, my employer, has stressed that they would not support the moving forward of the DRA. And, again, last month I mentioned that at the DRA meeting, that I would be abstaining from the vote because of that. So I want to just put that out there.
Alright. Now, in fact, what are we fixing to vote on?
Simply to pursue the extension process. And after that, we have public hearings, other things have to happen.
And ultimately, the city would have to, at the public hearings or somewhere before, the city's gonna have to vote on the term. It's a maximum of sixty years, we've already used thirty. So you've got anywhere from one to thirty to use. At some point, we'll need some other votes from the city, no doubt. It's just if we know the direction that the city wants us to go in, we can run it down and then bring it to you as it comes up, as opposed to having to explain a long, four-week process.
And I'd like to say, you know, some of the most immediate differences that you can see in town are money that's provided to the CRAs. Bill's done a wonderful job, you know, we vote on a project to be done, the next time we meet, it's done. It is immediate gratification, it's beautified downtown, Reed Avenue has never looked better minus the road. But that's being worked on as well with DRA money. I think that we've had our focus on Core Park and Reed Avenue, but I think we need to continue to move. Let's hit Williams, let's hit Long. Downtown doesn't stop there, Reed. You know, we need to keep expanding that downtown footprint and encourage more businesses to open up. So I am in full support of extending. I don't know how many years it's gonna take, or if the collections are gonna go up or down. But we'll listen to the rest of the discussion, I'll be more than happy to motion that.
Oh, man, I'm watching Commissioner Asbro.
Well, I'd like to say something.
Sir, can we start? Alright, start it for discussion. Alright, go ahead.
I'd just like to say that, like what Commissioner Asbro said, that we extended further than Reed Avenue, go to Williams and the rest of downtown, especially, we need specifically working on the park. But for now, go ahead and move on.
We've got one chance for an extension, you can only ask for an extension one time. So I think we need to go beyond ten years. I'm on the end of a ten-year term, and it seemed like it yesterday, so ten years goes by pretty fast. I'd like to see us just shoot for thirty years and go from there. It's wonderful, it's gonna, it'll give the expanded area a chance to come back. Expanded area being in the North Port St. Joe section, we allocate twenty thousand a year to help them move on, and at some, I'm not sure, at ten years, they'll be where they're gonna start reaping some benefits from the TIF funds. So that would be what I'd like to see, just shoot for thirty years and see what happens.
Yeah, that's a good point, Commissioner, because the only funding the other CRA has is us at this point.
At this point, yeah. So my second will stand, but I'd like to hear a repeat of the motion.
The motion is to allow the attorney and bill to move forward with proceedings of extending our CRA.
To, or how long?
There isn't, or is that a future vote?
We probably need to do that.
The board certainly can vote on that right now.
I'll go for thirty years, you can always cut it short, but you can't extend it anyway, so.
Alright, okay, my second will stand.
We have a first and a second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Unless you care to split.
I'll stand.
Appreciate your support, I really do. If there's any questions, you can call.
So the next step will be you guys.
Correct, correct. We will, and I provided a memo to Kennedy that outlines the next step, but we will need to gather all the information, we'll have to make sure it is within the city's comprehensive plan. We'll ultimately present a resolution to the board. Once we get to that point, the board will have to vote on the resolution, we'll try to thirty years long with the other details.
Can I ask that when you guys go into the portion of the application about boundaries that you come back to this board, and we look at possibly expanding the boundaries or redrawing them? I know that's a part of the plan, and we can, we can change that.
That's what Commissioner Alonzo put in.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Bill. Alright, senior attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have provided to the city, pages nine through fifteen, a proposed concession agreement. Prior to the meeting today, I spoke with an individual at the department to touch base with them. Essentially, this concession agreement, which I have provided to the board, has a lot of information in there. I'm not saying everything is legally necessary, but I have drafted and redrafted this lease so many times, I tried to put a lot of information so the board can come back and say either cut something out or amend it to something that specifically meets the board's desire. One of the issues, one of the items is the renewal number five. I simply added that, just because it's easy for me to take it out, and I wanted the board to see what it looked like. Next, if you go to number twelve, which should be on page, number twelve, but on page eight, there's some items that the concessionaire, FLCC is required to do. The board may or may not want to require the FLCC to make, take an affirmative action. Number fourteen, the cost of major repair, I have it at five hundred dollars. I selected that number, the board may disagree with that, which is perfectly fine. If you go to number twenty-four, termination, I have it highlighted just to bring it to everybody's attention. There is a sixty days notice vacant, the board may agree or disagree with that. Again, that is perfectly within the purview of the board to direct what should be done. At this point, if the city intends to enter into an agreement with the FLCC, the city's going to have to tell me if this agreement as proposed is satisfactory, or what changes need to be made. If changes need to be made, I will certainly make them, and what I would ask for is that the board tell me, direct what changes to be made as part of the motion, and also direct me upon making those changes, submit it to the department, so we can get some forward progress, if that's the direction the board wants to go in. If the board does not want to approve it, then obviously a motion to that effect would be necessary.
Has the other board, you got a chance to look this up?
I've provided, I assume I cannot answer that for certain, with any certainty.
Any one here today? Turtle people? How about those stories, sorry, you come up and, have you seen this?
Yes, sir.
How do you feel about it?
I'd be delighted to take it. I'm Linda Wood, 206 Long Avenue. We agreed to an eighteen-month lease. We do not agree that it should be renewable for another eighteen months at the end of the original lease. We believe that should go month to month, because we all agree, there were three commissioners, representatives from the Florida Coastal Conservancy and the Historical Society at the workshop that took place on December the twelfth. We all agreed that they should have use of the building for a period of time, but that when the city and the Historical Society were ready to display that lens, that we would give them notice and they would move out.
Now, we still have a sixty-day notice to file, wouldn't they?
Yes, yes.
Even if they had another eighteen months, you could still make a move within sixty days if you came out.
Absolutely, absolutely. So they would get eighteen months guaranteed, and then go month to month until we are, we're ready to do whatever, if we're not ready at eighteen months. Our, for the sixty days written notice, I really believe that it needs to state sixty days after we're ready to do the lens, because, gentlemen, I'm sorry, y'all may not be here forever. And quite frankly, I don't want to have to go through this process again. So if it's wrapped up and it says that when the Historical Society and the city are ready to display the lens, that we'll give them notice and they'll move out, then I don't have to explain it all over again for meetings on the end, and nobody else has to listen to it.
They still have their sixty days?
They would still have, sure.
Sure.
Absolutely.
I don't see anything wrong with that.
Absolutely.
I would just like to somehow incorporate in here somewhere about them, about the lens and the Historical Society, have them referenced in here somewhere, because right now, they're not referenced at all in this agreement. So sixty days, good with me. The city has to elect or require them to do it, but if there's somewhere in here that...
Not even to cut you off, Mr. Commissioner. We could have a trigger where upon written notice from the Historical Society that the lens is ready, would act as the trigger for the sixty days notice at any point. But do we want to do it at eighteen months hard, meaning they get to eighteen months no matter what? And then after that, the city can either renew, which is an option here, it can be month to month or another eighteen, it doesn't matter. But if there is a renewal that the, stuck on the FLCC, the trigger for moving, then will be the notice from the Historical Society, is that what the...
I'm hearing from you. I was got the, here somewhere.
No problem, I can put that in.
And that was, that was my question, ma'am, you had mentioned the guaranteed eighteen months.
We agreed to that.
This sixty days would apply to that first eighteen months as well. So are you saying you'd rather that sixty-day kick in after eighteen months?
Or at any time around eighteen months.
Or any time during the first eighteen months.
No, we agreed that we would give eighteen months, and that would give us an opportunity to raise the money. And so we will not go back on our word, we said we would do that.
So that's gonna have to change.
If that's the case, then we just do an eighteen-month concession agreement, with just your standard removal procedures, or if they don't follow through with the rules that they're supposed to.
Right.
And then at the end of the eighteen months, they can apply back to the board or anything else, if assuming that you're not prepared to go forward, and have no renewals, and just make them start over from scratch. And then you don't have to worry about a trigger writing another clause in there, they get eighteen months and that's the end of the story. And if they want to apply again at the end of the eighteen months, they can.
Any other things you have in there?
That's on my head.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner, is that it?
Yeah, I mean, that's perfectly fine with me.
I think you might have the problem with...
I'm kinda iffy on the hands. I'm glad we're getting something in place, that's my biggest deal. But after eighteen months, yeah, there's, you know, some, the money hasn't been raised or whatever, you know, they can apply again, so let's move forward, let's think.
Good evening, your majesty, two eighteen Gaudier. Linda failed to mention one other problem that we see in the lease. And to reiterate, we said eighteen months, we are good with that. We don't, and however you want to write it, if it goes beyond that, we just want to be able to tell them sixty days. So we're good with that. But the other thing is, is, and I believe it's still in the lease, although, I think Pat Floyd, I'm not sure if Pat sent you some changes, or, we object to the gift shop provision, because there is a gift shop gonna be right next door. I mean, there's already a gift shop there, and that money is used, that rate is money used to go back into the gift shop and to the lighthouse, and we just feel like that's gonna be, they're gonna pirate one another, they're gonna just hurt each gift shop. Now, if we can work out some way that the Turtle Conservancy can have items in the gift shop that's already there, fine, but to have two gift shops virtually next door to one another, we think is a problem, and we'd like you to consider that. Thank you.
And Mr. Commissioners, the reference point there would be number two, but if you go to page, let's list it, page six at the bottom, you'll see some good shot of educational displays, activities in gift shop. That is your point of reference. Does one be physical, page six of your packet? If you go, if I may.
Actually, it starts on five.
Yeah, sir, I got it.
I would, I would, I would say, take out the gift shop, leave the rest of it, and hopefully Historical Society could work out an agreement with the Conservancy Group where they could possibly sell some of their things and get a, you know, a certain amount of revenue off the items that are sold from them in the lighthouse gift shop. That's just Rex, I'm just, I thought as if they didn't sell some of the same items.
Absolutely.
Because I know like t-shirts and things like that, they probably don't want to sell,
Well, you know, when you open up a second item of interest in that park, it's gonna draw more people in too, so it may help both businesses by just bringing more, more people into the area. But I don't think we need to have both places selling stuff turtles, that's silly. But I mean, if the items were specific to their agencies, I don't see a problem with that as long as it's on a small scale. We're not opening a retail shop. My whole plan from the beginning was to just have activities for kids to do in that park, and they planned to do that.
So we're saying we will allow his shop as long as they all set in the same islands?
Then you got some gray area, you're gonna be the judge and jury of that.
How are you gonna determine, I mean, who sells what?
You know, I think the two entities just need to work together on it, and I think they can. If they can't, we'll hear about it. That's my two cents.
Which gift shop was there first, or was it the Historical Society?
Yeah, yeah.
And I just feel like if you have another, I mean, another gift shop there with, it's gonna be some kind of conflict. I don't, I, it's already been, we already been going through it with them just having at least for eighteen months. If you put them in the same gift shop together, you're gonna have, all you're gonna have is problems. So I feel like if it's Historical Society's gift shop there first, so I think they should be able to establish the right, the first right to be there. I mean, that's just, that's just only fair, and also, they're leasing this building to them, you know? So I feel like they should have the courtesy, because they've been nice enough to let them lease this building, they should have the courtesy to allow them to have their own gift shop there and do the things that they need to get done to make money for the Historical Society. I mean, I love the guys with the Turtle Conservation, and I like the things that they do, I like the things that the Historical Society do. But when I look at it as a whole, I feel like they were there first, been going through this here for long enough with the lease agreement, so if they're, they get in the same building together and have to split money, or she get this money, or they get this money, it's just gonna cause problems. So for me, I feel like the Historical Society should be allowed to have their gift shop there alone, if they want, I mean, that's just a fact, other than that, they've been there the longest. And also, the Historical Society was the one that bought this lighthouse into Fort St. Joe, you know? The Edgerton House, the other house that they have there, so I believe that it should be one gift shop there, focused on Historical Society, history of Fort St. Joe, and that's how I feel about it.
Come on up, please, man.
Just wanna make sure there's no misunderstanding, none of the money that we take in, either in the gift shop or the climbs, that the tower goes to the Historical Society. All that money is used to run the park. It goes into paying somebody to be there, to take the money for the climbs. This year, we put money in, and that we put lines in the building, so we're not making money to put in the Historical Society's coffers, it will haul, everything we make will go back into the building or the park. It will haul, everything we make will go back into the building or the park.
Okay, I didn't mean it, I didn't mean it like...
I understand, but I...
I'm glad you came on, because I didn't have a lot of time.
No, we do not take any money.
That makes it even better.
And so the profit out of the gift shop actually helps keep us open, because we are dependent on making our money June, July, and the first two weeks in August. And then we have several months that is very low, and then our winter guests come, so we have to prepare for those months when we don't have very many visitors coming. But I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that, that it's not for profit for the Historical Society. Thank you.
So we're saying no gift shop, but would that restrict them from being able to sell t-shirts that says the Turtle Conservancy or something like that, instead of having a full-blown gift shop? Could they sell t-shirts out of that port, out of that building, or you'd be ready to do that?
They're already doing that.
Okay, so that's acceptable?
Well, I think they're already doing that, and that, I guess we can live with that.
Now, would that would be in any...
We can live with that, t-shirts with a full-blown gift shop with other things. And to address Commissioner Ashbrook, I think that in theory is a great theory, but the public only have so much, so many dollars to spend. They don't come here full of money and they can go over to that gift shop and into that gift shop.
Right.
They're going to spend it in one gift shop. But I have no problem, doesn't give me heartburn for them to sell t-shirts.
All right, thank you.
So maybe just not exceeding what they currently sell, the gift shop not exceed what they currently have, or items? I mean, again, don't we become the judge and jury of did you expand your gift shop?
Mr. Commissioner, I would suggest either no gift shop or a gift shop, one of the two.
I would say no gift shop, if they want to sell a t-shirt, they can. That's not a gift shop, you know, just selling, like any other organization, might as well share their advertising what they own.
You'll have to have that. Specifically in the lease, correct?
If the board doesn't think that a gift shop's appropriate, then I will strike that, and there will be no mention of gift shop, that's not allowable use. From there, it would be up to the board to determine if they violated the provisions of this lease.
Easy enough.
So just to be clear, I'm hearing from the board to strike the gift shop provision as well as making this concession agreement eighteen months, subject to following all the rules associated with a lessor. But that's it. And I'd ask that the board make a form of motion and direct that I make those changes and submit it to the department, so we can get, if the board wants to move forward with this, so we can get in the business.
We got a motion, Commissioner Bezette? Yeah. Secretary, Jerry Lynch. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries my vote.
Thank you.
Got all you got, force?
At this time.
Yes, sir. All right, do you have...
Yes, sir. The first time we have is a reference to the North Port St. Joe PAC workshop. I did have a conversation with the city planning consultant yesterday. He will be available through next week. If we can set a date for up through next week, he'll be more happy to come down and be in the presentation for the PAC group. That way he can help us understand what we would need to do to move forward with this plan on there. After that, he will be out of contact for about three weeks, and if we could put something together for next week, he said he'd be available.
Mr. Davis, you have anything to say on that?
Sure. The only thing I want to say about that is that we want the city consultant to really control and orchestrate how this meeting should run. We want to include John Henry, but we also want to find a time that will be appropriate, because he's in Canada, and he will be calling in, because we can't get him down here at that particular time next week. So if we can set an appropriate time, looking at the fact that he's in Canada, that's on Pacific time, so we actually consider, you know, that he's not going to orchestrate, I mean, he wants the city consultant to do that. He's already given him the information that he needs to look at his own, so we want the city to make it a decision, so we'll know how to go forward from there.
So how many hours difference?
Three.
Five o'clock, I believe, on Thursday, five o'clock.
What date is that?
That day was...
Next Thursday?
Yeah, what is, Thursday's the fourteenth.
I mean, fourteen at five o'clock. Can we get that from our consultants, Jim?
Yes, sir.
John Henry being on conference call, if you want to say.
Right, we will notify him that, you know, he can call.
Fourteen, five o'clock. Thank you.
Mr. Davis, one thing, do you have the presentation and everything? Do we have that electronic that you could send to us? That way we can get it out to all of the board and get it to our consultant, that way he's got it ahead of time?
Yeah, we will have it sent to him.
Okay. The next time we have on the agenda tonight is the Tenth Street Park. Commissioner Bezette wants to talk to you about it tonight. One thing, one thing that did come in today, Mr. recently did come in today, I put it in front of you today, one thing he was talking about with them, we were talking about this call, so that's one thing, if the city were to move down the road, he wanted each of you to have it tonight.
As a city's member on the planning committee for Tenth Street Park, we've gone through quite a few different scenarios, and thanks to Clay Smallwood and Clay Kennedy, every, anytime I call them, they put something together. I get input from folks all over the city, you know, wondering what we're going to do for them. And we try to incorporate everything. I've got the latest one, there's some copies on the podium, I passed some copies in the audience. The latest proposal has six fields, it basically got three softball, three baseball fields. They're all the same size, so it'd allow you to have a state-run tournament either for baseball and softball. It would be, having six fields, we could just about run any kind of tournament you wanted to, which bring quite a few people in here. We've still got pickleball, we got great parking. I think talking to Clay, our stormwater pond probably going to be down off of Eighth Street, behind all that parking, because those will be paved around the softball fields. We're hoping we can get by without having a stormwater. So each commissioner has a copy of this, would like to... Oh, also, we talked about an eight-foot privacy fence between Eighth Street and the home zone, Eighth Street, Tenth Street, which backs up to the residence there, and that will give them some privacy and as well as keeping some of the noise down. And so with that, I will just open for discussion from the commission.
That privacy fence you're talking about, from this end on the Marvin side?
Yes, to go right, you know, right on the property line, you see the t-ball fields up there, be just behind the home zone, right on our property line.
Rex, was any consideration given to by adding these three additional fields from what I saw last time, the parking? Is that going to be overcrowded for tournament style, or...
I think we've got, Clay, do we have a number on those parking spaces down off Eighth Street, did you recall?
I think it's one hundred and nineteen.
That's, and that doesn't count the parking on Tenth Street, which is already there, that I'm not sure how many are there, twenty-five or thirty, or something like that. So we feel like, Dave, that we will have some additional parking lots. Without adding another parking lot somewhere, which would indicate we'd possibly have to have a stormwater retention pond close by.
This is still very close to the original footprint. I mean, I can support this as well, I think you're only encroaching it a little bit further over.
Yeah, it does go all the way to six feet. It consolidates it somewhat, which I think the county was happy with us doing that, and it's going to make it where we can afford to move forward fairly quickly and not have to continually prioritize what we want to do and where we want to start and that type of thing, so.
Well, one thing I don't want to do tonight is have a final vote on anything. I think that we ought to, if we all agree with this plan, that we ought to basically notice it, just like any change, any ordinance, and let the public have a chance to look at it, so it doesn't look like, this is the first that I've seen it, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But if we all support this, we need to get out to the public and let them know that this is the, option six is now the new plan.
I agree, I agree with that. I don't have a problem with that at all. But I would like to see us have somewhat of consensus up here, so we can move forward and hopefully not, I mean, the more we add, the longer it's going to take to get this thing done, and that's why we tried to keep it to a minimum and accomplish what the county commission set forth to begin with, to improve the Tenth Street Park, and have a nice place for our kids to play, have tournaments. I think softball's having to go to Sneed's this week for a state tournament, and I think we can do better than that, and we have a place that people can stay here and eat, so anyway. Is anyone in the office, saw this, lives near it, or Marvin, or?
First time.
Anyone want to get up and make a comment?
Jill BB 808 Marvin, I don't particularly want a fence. I don't mind the fields behind my house. This is much better than the first one that we saw. I'm worried about a couple of things. It's still taking down a lot of trees, and it's still putting in a lot of pipe, and I'm very worried about the budget. I don't think you can do this, keep my house from flooding and stay anywhere close to that budget that you've got. And I don't want to see the city enter into something that as the engineers get a hold of it and decide how it has to be, because this has to be permitted by the Northwest Water District, and it has to be permitted by the Army Corps of Engineers. And the Army Corps of Engineers is going to be insisting that there's no impact on flooding from this. And I think it's going to be very difficult to do that and stay within your budget. And for one tournament a year, I don't think it's fair to the taxpayers to spend all that money. I think three fields, probably, that plan we saw last meeting was probably ideal, it didn't have a lot of this extra piping. I don't think we need to try to bring tournaments in here. And as far as practice, I heard one of the parents say that they were crowded at practice times, they had to share fields. I have never been in a city where the kids could practice on the playing fields they played on. Wherever I've been, we had to take the kids out and go on church lots and other places for practice. You only played on the fields when you played on the fields. So I think that there's other ways to solve the problems than expanding it this far, and I'm very worried about the budget and the flooding. And I would like, whatever you go with, I would really like the city to put in there that for every tree they take down, another one gets planted further out on the Tenth Street Park, you know, towards Sixteenth. We need new trees there, those old ones are going to be dying. So, and the people who come here love that walking path, and they love the shade, so I don't want to see that go bad. I appreciate the work that's been done and input, and taking the input and trying to get everything in this, and this is much better than it was, but I'm still really worried about the budget. I have one fence behind my house.
Anyone else?
Go ahead. I'm Claire Morris, I live at thirteen oh four Marvin Avenue. I had come to congratulate you on the number five drawing and say how good it was, and seeing as that's the one that's posted on the website, the city website, this is the one that's on the agenda, and then we're thrown basically almost back to where we started from. It's not right behind my house anymore, and there's not a parking lot right there, but this is still a sports complex in a residential area. I understand you want a sports complex, but this is a residential area with all the same problems, the narrow streets, you're going to be bringing light, if, you know, if it's successful and you have the tournaments, we're going to have all the lights, all the traffic, all the noise, and these are our backyards. You've changed it, it looked great, and now you're going almost back to exactly where you were, and it says, and you say, the county wanted this, what about the citizens? What about the citizens who walk this, the people who come and visit it? Those of us who live here, you have changed it back to a sports complex. And not having this one on, I mean, this should have been on the agenda. Why wasn't this plan put on the agenda? So anybody who looks at the agenda, looked at that, that looked good to me, didn't come tonight.
Just got it today.
Well, it's not, then it shouldn't have been on, no, I mean, I texted this and I'm sending it to people, because I said, this is not what's on the agenda for your meeting tonight. And thank you for saying we don't want to vote, you don't want to vote on it and put in anything in. I appreciate that, because this is almost back to square one. We don't have pickleball on the back of our house, but, I mean, it's still, it's a sports complex in a residential area, and it just doesn't belong here. Three fields looked fine.
Thank you, ma'am. Steve?
We're going to get it.
All right, come on.
Thank you, appreciate it.
My name's Steve Doobin, I live in the neighborhood, two blocks away. I'm a coach, sponsor, parent, and I'm here to speak for the two-hundred-and-twenty-five kids that played sports this spring. We are jammed on the five fields as it is. We have not added three new fields. It's just kind of been reconfigured, and it's just one field that isn't added. So you're adding one field. To the lady's question on it, the taxpayers putting the bill, the beauty of this is that it can be posed as a, for hosting tournaments. It's not to say it will be happening one or two times a year, but at least we can call it something that's a destination of tourism, that fits the funding that will be coming. It's not going to be coming from us taxpayers. If we do not, if we do not do this with TDC monies, then it will fall on the taxpayers, because as a parent, we will demand more for facilities for our kids. It's not just the two-hundred-and-twenty-five kids, you've got grandparents, friends, relatives, there's probably, it affects eight, nine-hundred people there. And I can appreciate people not wanting their backyard, but this sports complex, as it was called, has been there seventy years, fifty, seventy years. And if I could got the people to raise their hand on the stats on this board, that either played there or had kids play there, it would almost be unanimous. So it's not like we're forcing this on a residential neighborhood, it's been there, and we've all enjoyed it, but we owe it to our kids to give them adequate services. And I think this is a perfect, perfect mix. We have scaled this back. I heard in the workshop, the county and city, we were looking for compromise. This is a very much watered-down version than option three, so for an aggregate of one new field for six leagues, I don't think that's too much to ask. So that's my input.
Well, I was raised in front of that field on thirteen oh nine Marvin Avenue, so I was right there close to it, you know? And like you said, it's our kids, I mean, that's all they have, they don't have nothing around here hardly, you know, that's all they've got. I mean, we've got soccer coming, we've got the soccer fields, we've got little league football coming, but we've been doing, me and Eric, me and Brett, we have played there together, you know? I mean, we've played, I've been here all my life, I don't know about anybody else, but I've been here all my life, forty-one years. So, I mean, it's something for people that have been here and have done, like you said, seventy years, that's waiting for... way before my time, and I think we should improve it, I mean, and not to say it goes as far as, like Steve said, the number three, I guess it was the, what was it, the number three that they had to add all the, all the parking, I understand that, but, you know, we don't want to have to go to Sneed's every year, we don't want to have to go down to, um, where'd we go, we went down to South Florida a couple of years ago, and I would play in the state tournament, if, if we had it big enough, and you can bring in, we won't have a district tournament, you know how much money they brought in up there?
They have a district this year.
Yeah, they brought it in about a year or two ago, and they brought in a lot of money, so, I mean, it's, it was a lot of money that came in, and you can go off of what they do this year, and all, that's just, all I have to say.
We all want a Field of Dreams, we can't afford it, and I mean, even the money we brought in, we got, maybe went six of the money that was needed, but the, the fields have got to be repaired, there's no doubt, I don't want to pay for it, quite frankly, and if there's a way to not fund it with, I would hate to come to you and say, "How are we going to repair all these, all these without, you know, let's use other funds?" So, I, I, again, I think this is a very good compromise from what was proposed, and for a net of one field, and a pickleball court, and everything in the same area that it is now, I think it's, I don't, I don't see how this cannot be a good compromise for it.
And lots of field we played on, it needs total approval, the fences ripped up, I mean, and my girls are eight U, but they're starting, you know, so, I mean, we're trying to get to where we can be competitive, and we can have people like Ms. Roma Queen come out of here, you know, we, we had a MLB player come out of here, so, and he played in the league with us, so.
And it's ironic, we honor the team tonight, I think every player owned there, played little players there, in spite of what we really gave them, so I think, I, I look forward for improvements, and, and I think this is a great way to do it, and, and I like option six, I think it has been back and forth, you can retrofit these to where you really have six softball and six baseball fields at one time, so, and we do practice on the fields we play on, we're not, we don't have the luxuries of not, so, thank you for considering.
Just don't have a bad place if you go.
Yeah, and it's always been there all our lives, you know, so, I mean, that's, that's just the way we look at it, it's, it's always been there.
And I'll teach you back to what you guys say about the youth in this town, they don't have a whole lot to do, they do need some things to do, you know, we need to think about them, they're our future.
Oh yes.
They're our future.
And we welcome workshop, like, I mean, it, it, a lot of people don't know about this, I'm talking to a lot of parents, and there's people around this ballpark that are looking forward to improvements, so, welcome workshop and weigh it out, and I think it's a great compromise, we did so.
Thank you gentlemen, thank you.
Yes, sir, Pastor Dave?
Yes. Thank you so much. I've been to every meeting that you spoke about, about the ball field, and one of my concerns have always been about Port St. Joe as a whole. We talk about extra parking spots, we talk about extra places to play, and at not one time in a half period, anybody considered a field that we have over there on North Port St. Joe side. Matter of fact, the field has been there and is well-kept, it can be used for an extra sports complex, all it needs to be a little work. The fence has been there ever since I was a little boy, and, and, and it hasn't been torn down yet, so I'm saying to you all, if you have not considered North Port St. Joe for part of that complex and opening up parking spots, you don't have a parking spot problem out there, and there's a big field out there that can be used for an extended area, and I think we need to consider, when we mention Port St. Joe, you know, we're only talking about 10th Street, but let's extend this out so that, you know, you have an extra field out there that's big enough to, you know, put a, you know, a, a, a big league out there, a lot of people that's coming to town or wherever, there's a big ball field over there, and it's in well, good shape, good shape, it needs a little work, but not that much as much as they want to do for 10th Street.
It can always be, be used as a field when we don't have enough room for teams to come in.
It can be a practice field that they don't use anymore, it can be used to play upon, uh, it might need a few good leashes here and there and a concession, but it, it can be used, you know what I'm saying, for the relief of parking spots, there's a field, there's plenty of parking spaces out there, but I'm saying, we need to sometimes consider, when we say Port St. Joe, how much are we talking about? Let's consider all of Port St. Joe, especially when there's extra space over there that can be used, and so when you draw up your plan, you'll consider what's already there for us. There's a big field, and it's got plenty of room, parking all the way around, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, by the way, that, that pro that's out of there, he come from North Port St. Joe.
Chester, I mean, uh, Mary, now, speak, yeah, speak Chester, the, the reason we did 10th Street was basically a mandate from the county, they said, "We will use the fifth penny of the tourist development tax to fund renovations of 10th Street Park." That was their motion, they, they formed a committee, which we're part of, to do that, and I have no problem with that, but we are, as, as Ms. Newman said, we are going to use tourist tax dollars to, to renovate this area, so, you know, it takes a burden off us, now, now to do what you're talking about, there's got to be a funding source, and I don't know where that's coming from, unless the county authorizes, unless the county authorizes that fifth penny to be used for that also, so, it's nothing discriminatory or ignoring anybody.
No, 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 it's not the ignoring part, it's the, let's go out to the county and include that in the conversation, we need to be included in the conversation.
We voted too, 500 to do it here as well, I mean, but.
I think some options we can look at. But I don't, I don't think we need to, 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 to change gears completely when we've, we've, we've got a good plan, we can use that to augment what we have, but, but I, I'm, I'm just don't think that we can stop, stop the wheels going, that are going, and say, "Okay, we got option, 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 option," so it, it will be up to the county as we authorize.
We need to talk about it.
Absolutely, don't have a problem with that.
Yes, Ms. Rogers? Does she land?
Yep. Yeah, you know me, I'm Elaine Rogers, 810 Marvin Avenue. I'm not trying to take anything away from any kids, that's not my point at all, but we had Field of Dreams, already it's there, okay? Now, this isn't in y'all's backyard.
Pretty close to mine, pretty close to mine.
Okay, but it's not in your backyard, okay, alright, move it to your backyard and see how you feel. Now, when y'all start doing this, who's going to be responsible if our backyards start We're going to come up and y'all are going to say, "Hey, not my problem," well, yeah, it's going to be.
It done flooded already back there, didn't it?
Not, not that much, but you start changing all that, and there's going to be a problem.
I had another person call me today, a terrible storm went back there, y'all it flooded and went rains, right beside you, it's like, I don't know, I'm just telling you, it's what I told me.
Well, you start, you start changing.
I've, I've been there 30 years, I did cheers there for a reason, that's swamp land, y'all talking about covering up, you don't, you don't left the swamp land.
What are you talking about?
I'm sorry to interrupt.
What are you talking about, though? We're talking about behind her house on, on Marvin, down to the inner lane street.
I know, I'm looking.
Are they talking about the same ditch?
I thought like, man, y'all.
You, you start covering up ditches and stuff, and it, and we're going to flood.
Right.
And I start flooding, and you're going to hear from me a lot more.
Yes, ma'am.
So.
As I say, we're still in planning stages.
But I didn't even know this was going on until somebody told me, this was all, we, I wouldn't know anything about this, this was kind of hush hush until all of a sudden it surfaced. Y'all planned all this, and we didn't even know on Marvin Avenue about it.
I just got this today.
No, I'm not talking about these, I'm talking about when it first started out, when we first, yeah, we first found out about it, yeah, we knew nothing about it.
Last plan?
Yes, sir, number six.
I looked on the website a week ago, this was left behind my house, last.
No, number six, you must have been wrong one, timeout, timeout, timeout. Oh, let me respond to that. I'm, I'm a city representative on the committee, we work with changes, I had several calls about, we may not get this project done at all unless we rent, hold on, sir, unless we add some, you know, a couple of elements. I asked Mr. Smallwood this morning, this morning, because of last night's first I heard about it, and so I asked him, "Could you put something together that we can look at that may satisfy the, the TDC?" Because if we don't, if we don't satisfy TDC regs, it's not going to happen anyway, so we have to have something that would satisfy the TDC charter that says it has to drop tourists, okay? So we've heard that over and over again, we tried to put something together, this was not something to pull over everybody's eyes tonight. Commissioner Ashbrook was right on, he's right on.
It's not much different, the first thing y'all had, we were bigger months ago, I mean, it's not much different.
No, I'm not talking about this one.
Timeout, Peter, we can't, we can't be talking out of turn, everybody get a chance to talk, just need to raise your hand when everybody's still, and you'll be able to come to the podium, please. Commissioner Ashbrook said it well earlier, it's new to everybody here, let's put it on the website, come back next meeting, I assume, if, or whatever this board decides to do, I won't be here, and, and go forward with it, we, we pretty much just about planned it to death, we're not going to make everybody happy, we have one lady here tonight that doesn't want a fence, we have other people that do want a fence that live there, so, there's going to have to be some compromise, okay? And we, we will never get it done unless we have.
Well, the compromise would be, put it where it needs to be with a Field of Dreams.
That's not realistic, though.
Well, realistic or not, it doesn't need to be in a residential area in people's backyards, put it in your backyard, we don't want it in ours.
You don't, you don't see any, uh, fault, conflict, uh, red field out there now, it's like you say, it's somebody's backyard, you going to do a field, uh, a multi, you, you go.
Timeout. We just can't, Rogers, we just can't go to talking, man, I'll bring you up here.
Had I known this, I'd have, I'd have, I'd have been here early, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be talking.
We'll bring you up right after Ms. Rogers, my man.
Right, surprise.
But, no, what I'm talking about, I'm not talking about the plans tonight, I'm talking about the original first plans. Someone brought this to our attention on our street, y'all did this, y'all didn't go walk by, nobody put on the news or put anything out, Port St. Joe saying, "We're thinking about doing this behind your house." We didn't get a vote on this as residents, we pay taxes, we live here, we didn't get a vote, y'all, the, everybody just come up and said, "This is how it's going to be." Y'all don't access on our taxes, do y'all want to pay $10 or whatever? No, we pay what you tell us, but yet, y'all go on and y'all do this and present it to us as residents, and we have to accept it, just like they have to accept our taxes, that's not fair. We didn't get a vote on this, do you want it here, or do you want it over at Field of Dreams where it's supposed to be? It's just put behind our houses now. When I bought my house, I was told that that ball field would not be there no more than two years, it was going to be moved to Field of Dreams.
Was there an official that told you that or just by you?
That was, uh, what, and he was, uh, the one who was doing the ball field at the time, I can't think of his name.
Benny Rock?
Yes.
Someone yelled.
Yes.
Wait, not Mr. Benny, yes ma'am.
Yes.
Yeah. We lost that word, feeling come up with, y'all, from. I, I, I mean, I, I think at this point, I'll just be honest and say, it's probably a moot issue that it's going to be moved completely, because there's just too many people that want it, just like the gentleman a lot ago said, it's 225 ball players, that's not counting parents, and it's not counting aunts and uncles, it's not counting grandparents.
It's not their yard, though, it's not their backyard.
Well, there's no way we can foul a ball player, I mean, it is.
Yeah, what are you going to do when all these people come in town? It's going to be in our backyard, not in theirs. They're going to go home, we're going to be stuck there, we're going to be the ones listening to this, we're going to be the ones that's going to have all the noise and the traffic and all, not them, they're going to be part of the traffic, they're going to go home, we're going to be there. It's our yards, it's, it's our back and behind us, not their house. I bet they've changed their minds behind their house, you would too, whether you want to admit it or not.
Everybody just parks in my front yard, I don't care, the, the kids want to play balls, they can park in my front yard, okay? They park all the way across my front yard.
Well, that's your fault, not mine.
I never complain, though.
Well, you know what?
Because the kids are down there having fun, and that's what's more important to me than anything.
Well, you know what, that's fine.
Yeah, they're all in my yard.
That's your yard, that's not mine, I feel differently. I pay taxes, just like everybody else, and I didn't get a vote on this, just like everybody on Marvin Avenue that lives by me did not get a vote, we got presented this, just thrown at us, actually, nobody presented it to us, we found out about it, somebody looked it up.
Yes, ma'am, but you have to admit, ever since you found out about it, we've been working with you, and as I say, I didn't.
And it's still there, and it's still there, the problem is still there, it did not move, it's still there.
I only told this today when I got here this afternoon.
I'm not saying that particular one, I'm saying the problem is still there, it's not moved.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the problem. And like I say, I want to know who's going to be responsible, y'all start doing all that, if we start having problems. If y'all aren't on the, setting up there, whoever's setting up there next, they're going to say, "Well, we didn't do it, it's so-and-so that was behind us that did it." Well, then what? It's not going to be any fun. And y'all just go pass the buck, because y'all, y'all going to pass on, y'all going to be gone, and it's going to be the next person, the butts just will keep passing, and we're going to be stuck with the mess.
Yes.
Ma'am, I just have a question, I just, just to wrap it up, I think we get the point, I just want to make sure, you wouldn't be happy with any of the proposed, you would like it moved Field of Dreams?
That's where it should be, and not in a residential area.
Okay, so you vote for Field of Dreams?
Yes.
I think, that's all, I appreciate it.
We thank you very much. Yes, sir, Rogers, you want to come up?
The last, uh, weeks ago, the last, I seen it was going to be from 10th Street back to 8th Street, you were going to move pretty much 8th Street to three fields, now that y'all added three, three more fields since then.
We only added one, because there already two fields on that side of the road.
No, 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 when I, when I looked, on y'all's website a week ago, I'm looking at it from my perspective right here, here's where I live, the 5th House on the right, going out the way from 10th Street. This, what you see here from 10th back to 8th, it all, it was showed, now y'all flipped three more fields in, back to the north, back to the south, let me show you.
Yeah, with the girl's softball, and we were laughing.
The girl's softball has always been there, you didn't even show that, uh, you didn't show anything there, but now they're three fields, they're six fields, two and three, and this, and now, now it's back to affect me again, and that's why I'm here, had it, it would have been the same, I would have been here, but, but I know, I know what's going on right there, I've been there 30 years, and I've, I've been through several hurricanes, you see what I'm saying? Back there getting water out of my yard, out of my shed or whatever, and when you're going to build that up more, it's, it's more of a problem on me. And that's, uh, you, you, you go through there and look, that's swamp land, you don't fool with Mother Nature. Now, if y'all got plenty of, uh, pumps from the city to pump that water out of there, when y'all building ball courts, go ahead, that's what it's going to take to pump out our yard. I mean, you, you can only do so much with water, and it's got to go somewhere. Now, there's plenty of land around here to put this, if you're going to spend all this money on ball, there's plenty of land to put it, not in a residential area. Now, them parks that been there, you know, they fine, but, uh, y'all, y'all going about this wrong.
Thank you, Rogers.
Collect their fathers five ball fields now.
Yeah.
On the side.
I'll, it won't take me just a minute. I'm Fred Norris at 1304 Marvin.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I would like, each one of y'all here, does it feel back to y'all?
Not.
Do y'all have problems with it? Be out there, are there problems with it? You know why? Because you don't live there. I'm getting strange feelings about this, the way that this keeps changing. Who's telling y'all what to do? Because the last big meeting that we had, the county told y'all precisely, "We're out of it, it's the city, and we'll go along with you." Now it's a completely, somebody is just feeding too much into this for everything to change so quickly, and, for y'all play ball, you do, and, sir, you the ones that wanted it do too. Tell me a complex that's in a neighborhood, you talk about Weewall, the money they brought in, this and that, where is theirs at? Where's all this, what, 16 million, that Panama City is building another one? Out of the city. I've never in my life heard or seen one, we come to the. We come to Black Rose here all the time. You go, what is that, uh, out of, uh, I forget the name of the little town. It's in both country. But here's the big huge baseball field. Complex is out there. They ain't a house within a half a mile of it. Why? Why is there not a complex in a neighborhood? Noise, lights. You have problems now with people leaving the lights on down there at the fields. I believe you need to kind of get your, get it together.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else?
It's still impossible that we might be able to at least have the city take it back to the county address, an open area, uh, as North Port St. Joe. At least you let it be a part of, make a motion to.
We can talk to them. I'll, I'll talk to them, I'll say, about seeing what we can do to enter that into it.
I, I think that conversation would help. You know, with, with, with all the complaints on.
I'd just like to say that, the, 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 what we need to look at is the, is the big picture. Baseball field has been here for 70 years. And this, this, this plan, I mean, I don't, I, we have, we have the money to revamp the fields. We don't have, have the money to go out, clear out land, put new ball fields, and everything else on, 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 on another field. When we can just revamp this field that's already here for now. Then maybe in the future, you can always come back and look at something different if you wanna expand somewhere such as North Port St. Joe or something like that. But you're talking about, um, a lot of money when you wanna go and, and just, just bulldoze some land, build new fields, a new complex, when you already have one right here that's been here all my life. And, um, I understand about, um, you saying that, um, you don't want it in your backyard. And, hey, look, I'm sorry, it's been there 70 years. I don't know who told you that we're gonna be gone in three years.
Benny Rock?
Well, and, 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 look, and look, I, I, I really feel for y'all. I, I understand about, know it, but we got to understand that we have a lot of kids here, a lot of kids here that play sports, that's, that's in the, um, baseball.
It's not the kids playing ball.
That's all, that's all. I just wanted to say that.
There you go. Let's lose.
That's our history, not mine.
We could be here all night discussing what, who likes, who doesn't like. Let's just go ahead and get it on.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to table this until the next meeting so the public's had proper time to take a look at it.
Oh, we have a motion, Commissioner Ashbrook, so I get it from Commissioner Perez. Table it. Hold it, favor say aye? Aye. Okay.
Mayor, the next item we have is.
I'm sorry. Cannot, cannot, cannot.
I thought it was up to him.
I said just one. Can we have citizen input into the? I'm sure that between all of you, that we can come up, I mean, the ball fields away. We're not complaining about the ball fields there. And it's not about baseball. It's about building a complex into, bring tournaments in. We can come up with something.
Please come up here where we can go.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Please sign in, yes ma'am.
I am signing in.
Don't resign me.
I did. Part two. That, I'm sure if you come up with a plan that will satisfy the county, that will be for tourists without creating a sports complex in the neighborhood. We have baseball there now. I love baseball. My son played baseball. I watch baseball. I support baseball. I support soccer, all the different, and we focused on baseball, but there are, there are a couple of other sports, there's soccer. But we can do that and satisfy the tourist development where it's something that will also bring in tourists. It doesn't have to be a sports complex or nothing. There's some brilliant minds in here that can come up with something that will work for everybody. And if you take our input and don't just say, "This is what's on the agenda," or, you know, "We're the ones that find out about the thing to start with." And it was hidden. Nobody could see it. And then the one that's now on the site is not even who we're talking about. And we're back to square one. Let us have some input. We can get it, get the kids a good place to play. We can have tourist development. We can get it all in together if you work with us. Let us work with you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right.
Ready to move on, mayor.
Ready to move on.
Uh, the next item is the reference to the drug dog. Commissioner Ashbrook wanna talk to you.
Yeah, I just wanted to get a, a formal blessing of the board and a formal motion to go ahead and proceed with the training of an officer and a drug dog. Uh, it's a lengthy process, can take anywhere from six to eight months to get done. So, uh, I'd like to get our blessing, go ahead and move forward with the training. We've got the money secured. Just waiting for everyone to say, "Go for it." So, I will make a motion to, uh, move forward with the training of the drug dog and the officer.
All right, we have a motion, Commissioner Ashbrook, we have a second. Second. Second, Commissioner White. Any further discussion?
I'm, I'm fine with, chief's fine with what's cost.
Already been raised.
It's already been raised.
Six thousand dollars privately raised.
How much?
Six thousand.
Six thousand. So, what, what's the ongoing maintenance? Anybody know that?
Uh, I've heard.
It's probably, uh, fifteen hundred dollars in, in food and so forth. And the annual training, I don't remember what that is.
I think it's about one or a hundred a year, two hundred or more.
So, about less than five thousand ongoing.
And he said he.
For you, yes.
Yeah, we'll find a way.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hold it, favor say aye? Aye. Much, here's my vote. All right.
Uh, the last item we have in our old business, mayor, is the lighthouse complex grant closeout. This is the $125,000 grant. We're coming to the close of it. You have approximately $4,800 left over in grant money. Uh, one of the elements that was talked about, well, all the elements were dealing with the outside of the structures and rehabbing them. And one of that we have not done is the other ramp for the Eglon Building on there. That, we do have some closes that are in your agenda pack tonight. If you wanna go forward and close out the grant, it's about $7,000. Uh, I believe one of the items too that we need to do is that the grant, I believe, had an obligation of $3,000 from BP money.
$3,000 from $25,000 in cash.
That we gotta expand too. So, that would be enough to cover that element if we wanna close it out.
So, you're saying with the grant closeout and BP money, we've got enough money to do a.
Do the ramp. Like, yes, ma'am. If you're looking to your, in your agenda pack, you got three closes below your bid threshold. If it's a wish of the board, we utilize that and close it out.
Uh, we've already got a motion, Commissioner Ashbrook. Need a second. Take it. Second by Commissioner Lowry. Hold it, favor say aye?
We're doing low bid here.
Low bidder.
Low bid, low bid. All right, hold it, favor say aye? Aye. Much, here's my vote.
Uh, first item we have in our new business tonight is tobacco prevention. Uh, Ms. Carrie Williams from the Health Department is here to do a presentation.
Hold up, Carrie.
I know y'all are so good. Glad to see me here.
Always. We're glad to see y'all, always.
Um, for anybody who don't know me, and I think everybody pretty much does. Uh, my name is Carrie Williams. I'm the Tobacco Prevention Specialist from, um, here in Gulf County. And, um, I know I kind of briefly spoke with you guys on the phone to kind of give y'all a heads up that we were gonna be here. Um, but I am actually going to turn it over to Mr. Bailey, Hunter Bailey. He is our SWAT coordinator, um, the student working against tobacco. And he is going to kind of explain a little bit of why we're here. And then Mr. Eddie is going to dove into more details.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for letting us come in tonight and speak to you guys. Um, again, my name is Hunter Bailey. I'm the student working against tobacco coordinator for Gulf County Schools. Um, brought along Eddie, as she was saying, he's a veteran SWAT student of eight years with Gulf County SWAT, has been working with us since he was in. Fifth grade? Fifth grade. So, um, Eddie actually graduated from school this year and he's heading out. So, um, he's gonna go into a little bit more of a new focus called Point of Sale. And I'll let him have the forehand, that's our guy.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Um, again, as he said, my name is Eddie Hunter. Um, we first, of course, wanna thank you, um, guys for what you've done for the city, of course, St. Joe, um, creating a healthy community and, um, place for our children. Um, for example, I know the ordinance, um, for tobacco-free parks, um, around playgrounds that established on, was established on March 2016. Has created safe environments for our youth to play. Um, these parks are used for sporting events, it's used for birthday parties, it's used for concerts and a lot more. For that, we thank you. Um, each year, our tobacco prevention program learns about new strategies, um, and to implement tobacco-free communities, excuse me. Um, tonight, we are mainly here to talk about one new thing, um, of course, and that is location. It's the location of the stores that sell tobacco products. It's the location of the placement of the products within the stores. And it's the location of the advertisement that's in the stores and outside of the stores. Um, the first thing, I guess, is the location, um, of the stores that sell tobacco. Research shows that schools with higher number of nearby tobacco retailers have a higher smoking rates. We are, of course, fortunate that we don't have that problem. We live in a community that doesn't have this issue. However, if we ever need a policy language to ensure future stores could not build near schools, of course, I'm your person for that. Um, the next thing, I guess, I wanted to talk to you guys too about is about the product location inside the store. When it comes to marketing in stores, the location of products and advertisements to reach customers make a big difference. For example, one study showed that youth exposed to a power wall, and that reference, um, is, I believe, in page 20. Um, were more susceptible to future cigarette smoking compared to those exposed to a hidden tobacco display. The second thing is tobacco advertisement. Big Tobacco spends billions of dollars, um, targeting youth because they know youth are more likely to be influenced. Of course, we know that. These tobac, these companies also target lower-income minorities, communities, um, with specific targeted marketing. So, in conclusion, the Tobacco-Free Partnership in Gulf County is here to basically assist you if you ever have questions, um, about tobacco policy work. And of course, again, we want to thank you for, um, the, for your commitment, excuse me, to building a healthier place for the community and our children. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We also have a small player kind of explaining what he was just talking about, um, with some of the statistics and stuff like that on there. So, if there is any questions or any.
Here, I've, I've got a question. Uh, do you concentrate on vaping as well as?
Absolutely.
Okay, you didn't mention vaping, just strictly said tobacco. They don't, you know.
It's a fine line of who accepts that into tobacco and.
Right, I, I, and I know our parks, uh, also, uh, when we made the ordinance about parks, we included vaping in that. So, we're good there, but, uh, just wanna make sure you guys were on top of that also.
Yes, sir, we sure are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely.
I can't believe people can afford them cigarettes today.
They have gotten a little expensive.
Oh, that's what I heard. I don't smoke them.
The prices of your picture are very out of date.
Thank you.
All right, thanks y'all very much.
Good job.
All right, the next item we have, mayor's reference to the Gulf Coast Work Force, Work Force for Leases. The Solar Program kicks off next week at the Washington Gym. We started this week with the actual stack house on there. It's time for the, uh, renewal of the leases on there. It's on pages 21 through 26, ma'am.
Jim, the only question I have on leases with them is the gym itself. Uh, the reason being, certain times of the year, citizens that live in that community have special events. And in the past, there's been a problem with them being able to use the whole gym. Even the ladies bathroom, they've been locked up, they couldn't get into the ladies restroom. There's a storage room there that, um, they keep a bunch of chairs and tables that workforce boys said belongs to them is theirs. But I don't think anybody responsible, like I know Mr. Chester, he's used it a few times, but he's had to go through some problems sometimes. So, I, I wanna hold off on the gym till we can, we get it a little longer or something. I mean, that's up to everybody else too, but, uh, it just, you know, I, I don't wanna be restricted with citizens that's lived in a community all their life. And the thing that's coming up next is their Juneteenth celebration on the 16th, on a Saturday. And they need full access. And I think solar somehow in that lease, there should be something there. If they have a designated time that they could use anything that's in that gym. They'll sign for it. If anything gets tore up, they'll pay for it. They don't have a problem with that. But I just, I do have a problem with that part of the gym lease. But I know they did notice, notice in there about the storage room.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I mean, I gotta say if, uh, maybe let's buy our own tables and chairs and we use that storage room and let them find another storage room living. I mean, it's just ridiculous. You don't wanna let people use stuff. And it's responsible people, it's not unresponsible people. That's what gets me. So, I, I don't know how the rest of y'all feel about it, but, uh, I would like to hold off on the gym till we get some clarity on what's gonna happen, like when people have lived there all their life. Went to high school there, and then they can't even use their own gym. Those people think they're gonna not be responsible. But I know the people that rent it, they're all responsible people. And they will sign after anything they use. If anything's tore up, they will replace it. So, that's just my two cents on that. I'm, I'm good with everything else in there, it's just the gym.
I've had, again, mayor, I've had complaints from the public, probably the same people that had issues that spoke with you. And I think some of them got resolved, uh, some maybe not. Uh, I would support, you know, you working with our attorney to maybe tighten up the gym clause of this lease. But I, I don't want this to take away from those kids. It's an awesome program.
Oh, yeah, I know. I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that, I'm just saying they need to cooperate a little bit.
In order to lease it out, if we don't, if we release, could the kids still go in there? When you say start gym?
It actually starts next week, I guess.
Next week, they start.
I guess what we have is right now, we would not have a lease with the program starting next year. I guess that would be a legal question on there as far as liability on this at that point.
I definitely don't want to get into that, because I remember last term, we got, it was back and forth, back and forth, and a career source almost wanted to back out the whole deal. It just got...
That's why I want to know if...
They did back out, but didn't rent it for the whole year anymore. They used to rent it for the whole year. So, we made concessions with them, letting them rent it for a certain part of the year instead of the whole year. They should definitely be able to make some concessions where people want to have Juneteenth and all that.
Yeah, I'm just...
Yeah, I can look at her.
I just don't want to not have the gym open when they get ready to start with the summer.
Oh, I don't need, I don't need that.
That's the only thing, that's my only concern, but as far as the tables and the chairs being accessible to anybody at least a place, I think that's okay, but I just want the kids to be able to have the gym next week, you know, in that...
Yeah, me too. So, we're going to need to go ahead and okay this with the idea that we're going to talk with them, that they'll understand. I mean, Chester, you have anything to say to this?
Yeah, I know. The other thing that we have is that the process of doing this is a community event, and if we have a community event, we are taking charge of the gym just as if we owned it also. So, we're responsible for everything, but anyway, to close us out on certain areas of that gym, I think it would be bad business for that community, especially when you come in and say, "This is now somebody else's gym when those people live." And it's been an issue when we get ready to go into women, get ready to use the restroom, and they can't find a spot. We men can do okay, but the women, we like our women to have their privacy. And to have rooms shut off and say you can't use them, you know, because it's your facility, we won't stop that. And we promise, and we have done very well in the past, making sure that everything we touch in there is replaceable or we take care of it. So, you know, for them to just shut it off like that and not allow us to use it is ludicrous. So, you know, we want to work with them, we're not to cut down anything that's going on. Eventually, one day, we want to buy the whole gym from the city. That is our hope.
Thanks, Mayor. You hit on one thing about tables and chairs. We grapple with that the last couple of years. Why don't we make an effort this year that we, just go ahead and try to find money, and I told you, to buy a number of tables and chairs for the Washington Gym, and send them forward to the St. Kingia Building. That way, they can be accessible to the public for whatever it means.
Right, that's a good idea.
Why don't we do that? Why don't we, Mike, if we can make sure that we, let's do that. That way, we know the tables and chairs for whoever needs them.
And I say, I just want them to know, to be aware that when these people do use that facility, they need to use the ladies restroom. They don't need to lock it off and say they can't use it. I don't know why that would happen.
Hey, Mayor, I heard today too, that there is an event company actually closing down, trying to sell all their stuff, so maybe we'll get a bunch of tables and chairs submitted here by...
Mayor, that's been the biggest bone of contention with the workforce lease is that access to Washington Gym. And if the attorney can write in the lease somewhere in there that's going to have some teeth, I guess you would say, then it needs to be there, but we need to have something written. We're going to lease it to them instead of complaints coming to you and Jim, and then you run out there, have them resolve it, try to do it. Needs to be in black and white.
Yeah.
And we move forward, and everybody will know where everybody stands.
And if there's an inventory issue, then they sign off on inventory.
That's correct. Yep.
We can certainly write a provision that meets the city's desires into this lease. Now, I believe one issue I brought up was the lease is about a term, and I don't know that we can get the provision written in and executed prior to the termination of the lease, which I'll talk to next week.
With the kids starting the next week, and it has expired, so yes...
Theoretically, they'll be operating without liability insurance, or any written agreement.
Can we, with a motion to the board, extend this lease one month?
Certainly. Now, the question is, will they accept that?
The current lease has been scaled out. Mayor pointed out one thing on there that it's been scaled back. Used to it was for a twelve month, it was for the full year, now it's just for the summer program. So, the actual period, yes, sir, so the period of this lease for the gym is only through, I think it's through August fifteenth, so...
May fifteenth?
Yes.
June fifteenth, so...
August. And I think we've got, I think Mr. Davis has it, I think there may be one other event, so I think you've got two events, I think.
I know they got the Juneteenth. Anything else you have in there, Summer?
I think it's another event, but it's a very small.
Okay.
But, you know, we might have a funeral, you know, and so those things are very important for us, you know. If we have a funeral, and like I said, there has never been an issue with us bothering stuff, you know.
I think we probably, the best thing is go ahead and approve it like it's written now, and then we'll work on it for the next time, and I think Mr. Langson here has a pretty good rapport with the people down there, and maybe he can go and talk to them and just emphasize, you know, we need to use this stuff occasionally.
And let's move forward like Jim says, budget.
Just get some tables and chairs.
Some tables and all that. All right, we have a motion?
What's that mean?
A motion from Commissioner Alvin. Second from Commissioner Alvin. Ask. Any further questions? Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries five a.
The last item I have here tonight is in reference to secluded Dunes Sewer, Mayor. Secluded Dunes is a neighborhood that's at the furthest point on our sewer connection, south closer to State Park, so they're in the process of, they have put a line in place, and they're in the process of putting together a lift station over there. Mr. Tom Gibson's here tonight to talk to you about what they've done and what they're proposing to you.
Good evening, I'm Tom Gibson, thirteen oh three Constitution.
Welcome back.
Don't have much experience on this side of the podium. The folks at the secluded Dunes Drive, which is the last mile, three-quarters of a mile of privately-owned property going out into the state park, they struggled for a long time over the quality of the road going out there, and they've been trying to get sewer out there for a long time. We've been working with city staff for a year and a half, less? It's been a while. Jack Cosmonds has done the engineering for the group out there. Pro Rish's, Newberry, has refuted from the city, and the line has been installed. The first customer, I think, is actually hooked up. Be another one in another thirty days or so. And y'all have an ordinance that says that if an individual runs a sewer line out on the Cape, that would ultimately be able to serve five properties, that you will waive the impact fee for that person. On this line, a group has raised close to two hundred thousand dollars. There are nine people that have contributed, and the line runs past approximately fifty lots. And so, what I'm asking for tonight is you agree to waive the impact fee for those nine specific property owners. I think that the ordinance allows that. It, we, you know, we didn't exactly have the situation in mind when we wrote it, but I think it's, you know, one and five and nine and fifty, the arithmetic works pretty well. I think we have an agreement with staff that the city will not take ownership of the line for the longer of a year or the point where ten houses are hooked up out there. Ultimately, there's probably a hundred potential sewer customers in the area out there. There is a, there's a map in your package, page thirty-two, I think, that the sort of shows what we're doing. It's, the line is hooked into the line that the city constructed in Sunset Point subdivision out there. And there is a draft of an easement agreement whereby the property owners are given the city aneezement over this property. It will ultimately say that the city will own the line after that time period is run, and then we're asking you to consider waiving those nine specific impact fees.
Tom, now, the private property owners putting pipe in, did all that?
Right.
To two hundred thousand?
They raised two hundred thousand dollars. It won't cost all of that. I think the lift station is due to go in toward the end of this month, and that should actually improve the service at the end of the city line out there. That's sort of what they're doing. They've also been working with the county, and I think the county has agreed to, at the expense of the property owners out there, the county has agreed to take ownership of that road and pave it. So, and if that road gets paved, then the market out there is going to improve, and we may get some more sewer customers.
All right, just let me get something clear, excuse me. All right, you want us to waive the impact fees? Will we take ownership of the line after one year?
One year or ten customers, whichever is later.
Not including the nine? Not including the nine? Does that include the nine?
Ten total customers.
Ten total.
Those are the, sort of the numbers that we've come up with, talking to the engineers and John and Jim.
That's what was leading to my question, is ten customers enough? I mean, at the end of a line? Are they going to keep their faucets on all day to flush it out?
You know, as Tom said, we've talked about this for a year and a half, it's been all over the place, you know, so Jim, if you want to speak up on the customer base, I mean, certainly, you know, dive in.
I think it's agreeable. We've been working on this, we don't have a magic number. This is the end of line on there. This is our best guess on there. This would give us enough time for the system to be running, and hopefully, if there's any problems with it, we should be able to figure them out before that time. So, I think this is, I think this is a middle ground step.
It is, and they are constructing a lift station if this wasn't cheap, bottom line.
What's the cost to the city on any of this?
Zero.
And you got, you got, the potential for revenue. You got an engineer that's designed it, and then our engineer that's looked at, so...
We've worked on this for almost two years, so staff's comfortable.
Does staff's comfortable make a motion to accept that proposed?
All right, motion from Commissioner Ashworth, we have a second.
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Alvin, any discussion?
My way, my way, Mayor.
Oh, yes, sir. Come on up. State your name and rank in the board of leases.
Mark Manley, thirty-five, thirty-three Garrison. I have a question for gentlemen there, and you guys as well. It's hard to hear back here, but it is a private association, right?
It is private.
Okay. You didn't do the deed issues. You were talking about the roads and stuff like that, has that been deeded back before you started talking about ownership of lines and everything like that?
We have, we have easements signed by the property owners in the road.
So, who owns it? Is it that county or city, or is it owned by the private membership?
It's owned by, today, it's owned by the group that originally developed it.
Until it's over, your guys' commitment ends at the beginning of that subdivision, just like fire, police, ambulance, it all has to be contracted in there. So, technically, until that's deeded over to the city and or county, I don't see why we should be spending money on something out there.
I mean, that's the whole point, you're not spending any money.
Yeah.
Well, if you take an ownership of a line, and that is going to maintain it, and you guys are going to maintain the right-of-ways, the ownership of it, that's going to fall back on taxpayer.
A year at the deadline, a year from now, or the ten customers from now, the county will own the road, the city will own the sewer line, and the city will be charging the customers for the service.
Need the customers. Need the customers.
I mean, we start off with revenue on nine, or as soon as that tenth one hooks up, then four a year, we take ownership of it, but continue to collect the revenue from the sewer system, so, I mean, we should maintain it if we're collecting the money for it, and we're going to get some free time collecting on nine while they still own it. So, any problems between now and then belongs to the homeowners.
And the other thing is, the last private subdivision out there before this one, we got four or five prepaid taps out of Sunset Point, and the city ran that line. At the city expense, so...
Now, we don't run, we get ten.
Instead of that cost to us.
Okay, who's going to cover the man-hours and that? Who's paying that though?
The property owner covers the...
Well, you're talking about a hookup fee, you just asked for a waiver of hookup fees, right? Who's covering that cost?
They cover.
Mine covers, like, the house. We put up...
Because I thought you just, that's why I'm up here, because I thought you asked for a waiver on all that.
Impact fees.
We're talking about a waiver of the impact fees and not the tap fee.
Correct.
Okay, like I said, with that air conditioner going back, so, okay, that's what I was wanting to get straight on.
True.
Thank you for your...
All right. All right, now, we got a first and second discussion, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries five a.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Ladies and gentlemen, who's the board?
Yes, sir, that's all I have. All right, probably more.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make my board brief. Avenue A, the water lines is the first item, that project's been complete. We do have a verbal clearance document, the water's picking up weight on it written before we actually bring that into service. Because it was existing, it does not need clearance from FDB, just the lab, so we're hoping the next few days to get done. But it is in place, the old line is off, cut the cap, so, you know, it's better than what, a lot better. The water meter replacement program began yesterday, our contractors came to town. Folks will see, you know, four or five individuals, you know, probably for the next few weeks, you know, changing out those heads and replacing meters, so just want to let the board know that was going on currently.
John, can you get this out in the open and let everybody know that a cost of changing water line doesn't mean that the water bill is going to be affected? I mean, could you explain that?
Well, yeah, I don't know if I'd make that statement, because sometimes it could, if it reads slow or slow or fast, you know. But no, ultimately, it will not. What this is, what this is doing for us is improving, you know, our ability to read these meters more effectively and more accurately. You know, the meters we have currently are pushing eleven years old, twelve years old, so our failure rate, and the reason we started this several years ago, has been slowly but surely increasing every month. So, the board made the decision last year to take a phased approach at the replacement of these in an effort to, again, improve the efficiency of how we read these and certainly the longevity of the meters. But no, see, it will have no effect on how be the price of water, how much an individual pays, unless they use more gallons.
That's all I wanted you to say, because a lot of people, they concerned, and I just want you to explain that to them.
Right, yes, sir, that's correct.
Mr. Langson, one thing that will help out, when people are accustomed now to having a data log, they want to be able to see that data log, we're all used to custom to it, and right now, that's one of the elements that has quit working on a lot of them. So, now, we have to go out there and do a manual read-off of them, so the reading, we can still get that, but you can't get that data log, so that people are, say, you still want to be able to see that gallon per day. It'll give us that element back that we'll be able to do.
Okay, that's great, that's great.
The third item, Jones Homestead Sewer. We anticipate right now kicking that project off the next two or three weeks to begin construction. We have all the materials in hand, permitting is in place, you know, Clay's provided us anything for that, so, again, two or three weeks. We've got a bunch of smaller things we want to accomplish and get done that we kind of push down the road as we've started with water projects and various other projects, so two to three weeks, we'll be beginning that. Our plan right now is to start on Cape Plantation Drive, work back to the east, and then we'll work back up through the other streets.
We currently have forty paid commitments, and we still have twenty-five additional available, so anybody in the Jones Homestead area needs sewer service, they can get it at a markedly discounted rate.
And the next, the last item, Mayor, is the fishing piers, the board voted on, I believe last meeting, I wasn't here. Spoke with our draftsman today, he's about seventy percent, we should have some plans by the end of the week, that myself, Mr. Smallwood, and Jim, we can all, you know, start making sure that that's what you guys want before we, you know, submit out the bids. Once we get that, what we feel like is somewhat complete, we'll bring it back to you guys for approval and permission to bid.
Mayor, clear something up for me, the last meeting, I really wasn't sure if we decided just to renovate both piers as they are, or just renovate one, expand it, make it a little nicer, therefore, and we agreed to do just the one.
Yes.
That's all I have to draft.
Right, okay, but I just, I thought, I thought that's what we did, but I want to clear that.
Well, not, yeah, yeah, correct. We're focused on the one by the restrooms first, and then we'll move to the second one at a later date.
Okay. All right. Ladies and gentlemen?
That's it, sir, unless there's any questions for you.
Do you have any questions for John? All right, Larry, service work?
Yes, sir, Commissioner, I'll try to be brief. Under our service agreement with Utility Service Company, we're scheduled to have our elevated tanks here in town cleaned in July. We're supposed to start July the tenth, they're going to get the Shark Tank first, and then they're going to do the Tenth Street Tank, and they actually going to have to do a little renovation job on the Tenth Street Tank. There's a few issues with the exterior of the tank, so they're going to be here for a little while, just to let you know, to be around town. And also, our disinfected by-product sampling, we did pass it for the quarter, just to let you know for the state.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen? Any questions for Larry? All right, I'll find out, correct. Mike?
We have not received our audited financial statements yet from Ben Banff, but we did speak to him, and we hope to have the draft in-house this week, and hopefully have him at the next meeting to present our fiscal sixteen seventeen of audited financial statements.
All right.
I don't have anything else.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
No questions for him? Who's flying and who's not flying?
Did he answer about that? Oh, yeah, yeah. Didn't nobody ever got back with him. Yeah, I got one.
All right, city engineer?
I could even, we're getting there. He's playing, he's down. I'm looking, he's playing.
You don't have any, huh? All right, we didn't type most time. Thank you. Hi, Kevin, come on. Bring it to him.
Yeah, a couple things, we're discharged.
Okay, yeah, a couple things, we're discharged, and we'll try to discharge all through June. We don't have a lot of water available to discharge, you know, the pond looks like it's high, we can only go down just so far, but we'll try to get down as low as I can, because July is supposed to be a wet month. Like four inches above the normal, you know, so we're kind of expecting, you know, a bit of that. We're moving sand now, remember the last, all right, we got MVP, so we've got, yeah, okay, the sand, and we're we're shoving sand out there now, kind of playing the spray field, just kind of leveling everything out, so we can get out of that one. So that would be one thing off our list. I'd like to go back out for bids. We went out for bids a couple months ago to repower the wastewater plant, and everything came back high. We've talked to as many folks as we could find, and it seems like it may be the right time to go back out for bid again. So if it's okay with you guys, I'd like to go back out for bid and see where we are, see if we can get it within budget.
Need a motion for that.
So.
So a motion by Commissioner Ashbrook. Second?
That's it.
Second by Commissioner Eric Langston. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five eight.
Thank you.
That it?
We've got one more thing, the, you know, we got one socket truck that died. It's way past its warranty, that technology, that unit is about forty-four hundred dollars, you know, for one unit. I was hoping there would be competition, there is competition, so there's a company that makes a different style, half the price. I talked to one chemi- chemical engineer that's using it, but I've only got one guy now that I've talked to that you can trust, you know, to tell you what's going on with him. So I'd like to do a little more research to figure out if that's fit. If it is the best fit, I've got the money and the budget, I would like to put another structure in place that we're seeing some ouchie pop up, and it's going to get worse. So it's ready, the sooner that we can get one out there to knock the ouchie down, if they're operating it, we've got five or six running now.
Would you like us to okay that as long as it's within the budget?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion.
All right. By the way, Commissioner Ashbrook, we have a second. Second by Commissioner Aziz. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five eight.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's all I've got, Commissioner.
All right, code enforcement, everybody. Get them, are you still sending everybody updates this week? Pickup, what are you doing? All right, chief?
Thank you, mayor. I do have one thing on the agenda tonight, but I think we need to talk about first, you know, public meetings and how they work, and the rules, procedures. There are procedures in place for our public meeting is to be conducted. And everyone in the public needs to understand, they will get their chance to talk at the appropriate time. And it's inappropriate to yell from out there, and it's just, it's a disruption of the process, and everybody needs to understand that, it makes the meetings last longer and it gets nothing accomplished. The last exchange we had with Mr. Manley and Mr. Gibson, that's the appropriate way to do it. If someone wants to say something, they raise their hand, they're recognized by the mayor, they come to the podium, they sign their name, and they say what they got to say. Doesn't matter if they don't like something you did, or they don't like something on the agenda, they'll get their chance. And I just think, we get to a point where if we're just going to allow outbursts, then either we've got to do something different, or we've got to take harder stands. And I think everybody needs to understand that.
I agree.
Thank you. With that being said, the only thing I have on the agenda tonight is golf carts. Golf carts is an issue that we've been battling for some time. Several of you guys have talked to me about different issues and things you want to do. And I would suggest that we schedule a workshop, and we have a workshop to get all that out in the open. Mr. Albert and I have talked about it as well. You know, if you guys want us to enforce stuff, we need some fines and some penalties in that ordinance. Right now, there's no teeth in that ordinance, you know. Somebody came up here last week and said, you know, in Georgia, they do this or whatever, well, this ain't Georgia, but we don't have anything in our ordinance that gives the police department the authority to do anything. If a golf cart's breaking that rule, they can, we can tell them to go home, but if they don't go home, there's nothing we can do. So I think we need to decide that we want to consider fines and penalties. I think there's a liability issue with the city. We need some signage around town, there's only two places in town that tells people this is a golf cart community. And I would suggest we consider requiring insurance for golf carts. We've had some golf cart wrecks lately. You know, it's, the liability's going to fall on the city when somebody gets killed, or something happens on a golf cart, and they don't have insurance. Really good suit, so all those things I think we need to consider, and I think we need to we need to figure all that out going forward and work through those issues, if you guys are willing to have a workshop. That's all I got.
I'd love to have one, chief, I'd love to have one.
Let's schedule it, let's do it.
All right, let's do it.
Thursday, four o'clock. We got five o'clock, we can do it from four to five. Put on the name down. Start at that four, and then put those two items on.
This Thursday or next Thursday?
This Thursday, fourteen.
All right, fourteen. That gives us a little time, but maybe golf cart, send them out or something.
That sounds good.
On that agenda, start at four.
You know, I, Mr. Boyd Pickett was, as he was leaving, he grabbed me in the back and said, hey, if y'all want to have a meeting, he's got some ideas, he wants to talk about some things too. You know, he said he's seen three people this week driving without a permit, and I don't doubt that that's happened, but if we see that, there's nothing we can do other than stop them, tell them they got to have a permit, go to city hall and get it. If they don't do that, there's nothing we can do.
Chief, I was in Jim's office discussing this very thing, and one drove right down seventy-one right in front of city hall. It's still.
Either they don't know the rules, or they don't care. And I believe it's a little a blur.
It probably is.
Some people don't know them, and some.
They don't have, I can promise you.
And I know they know the rules, and cross seventy-one when they ain't supposed to.
I can promise you, if they don't have a sticker, they don't know the rules.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. A lot of people say, we're going to do it at four o'clock on the fourteenth. We'll send letters out to all the golf cart people between now and then.
Is there anything you want to add?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just, Mr. Herring and I have spoken along with Mr. Anderson about this issue, and I would agree with him as it stands now. It's hard to condemn him or his force from not enforcing the rules, because there's no real mechanism to do it. Also, we can, we're talking about legislation, that's what we're talking about. So we can have it narrow and smaller, we can have it broad, so it would help a great deal if we could have this workshop, determine what it is that the board feels is in the best interest, and then we can start chipping away to provide the legislation that the board feels is appropriate. Because there's so many ideas we want to hear, we got to synthesize those ideas down in the proper way. And then, like I said, it can be large or small undertaking, it's whatever the board feels, but it would be nice if we could get some direction before all of us start working together to create that legislation.
Mayor Dalton, you were talking about trying to send a letter, if we're going to meet next Thursday, that's going to be a tight window. I can get with Miss Kent tomorrow to try to get it out as quick as we can, but I don't know if that's going to be a tough one.
Something else is, I mean, we have almost two hundred golf cart permits, so you may need more than an hour.
I hope mine's waiting after the fourth of July, since, you know, after our first meeting in July, or somewhere around that area.
We could be, it may just take a little longer to get the letter out to the golf cart people.
Yeah, that gives plenty of time, we do it sometime after the fourth. One looks good to everybody. When's our first meeting in July?
The third, third. The third, why also has a test.
This one? Yeah, I'm fine with that. At that time, enough to get a hold of everybody, that's the plan.
The twenty-sixth of the month, the last Tuesday of the month?
Would that be all right?
Yes, sir.
All right, what time?
I'd say regular meeting time.
See, you got to have the, get them get home from work. Six o'clock.
Still going on the fourteen for the pack. Fourteen for the pack, twenty-six for the golf cart.
There you go.
What was the time to get mayor, six o'clock?
That's all I got, gentlemen. All right, we get paid for chief. All right, chief, thank you very much. All right, the city board.
Election update, we're in the process of having early voting, I understand there was a rapid crowd that voted Saturday. Things seem to be going well. We vote through Saturday, and then we have the election, but we're not aware of any issues or any problems. So, we seem to be on target.
Have you got your people certified and voted, or whatever?
The, the people that did the polls yesterday, they have a training session, I believe it's Thursday. Mr. Hamlin's taking care of that, but yesterday, everything's set up. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am, anything for Michelle? Right. Yeah, citizens be heard. Come on up, you got.
My back. Mark Manley, thirty-five, thirty-three Garrison. In regards to what the chief was just talking about, I would ask that you guys take into consideration, chief, I don't know if you'd be open to it or not, this isn't a city problem. They got a problem tying up deputies out in the county with these guys riding down sidewalks out there. And that's, that's dangerous for pedestrians, bicyclists, and everybody else out there. Would you guys take into consideration being open to discussing this joint with the county, so that everybody would be on the same page with this? So we're not doing one thing out in the county and another in the city. Formulate something on that, because I'm sure that there's a lot of folks out there that would like to be heard too on that one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Come on up.
Yeah, I'm back. I just have one question. I would like to know when there would be a workshop on the park. I mean, you've invited public input, but there's never been an opportunity. And I was, I was invited by the county to come to the county-city park workshops, but I never saw one scheduled, so.
What are, what are the meetings, Commissioner, is that normally scheduled? What are those meetings?
The county, at the last meeting, the county suspended those meetings when we said, well, here's the money, or they said, here's the money, we said, okay, let us plan it, we'll come back to you, and then they'll schedule, you know, the meetings of the full committee, which includes TDC, the county people, and so on and so forth. So that's where it is, that's where it is.
So how do we have a way to give our input?
So I would assume at the next meeting, we table this from today, that it'll probably come back next meeting, our next regularly scheduled meeting.
I'll wait, go two weeks from today.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. But that still doesn't give us any opportunity to sit down and talk to you about.
Everyone's got a phone number, it's listed, and that's what I suggest. For one-on-one, get you called each one of us.
All right.
Two weeks to do it.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Anyone else?
I'd like to ask for more things, I apologize, I have one more, one more question I've got just cleared up on what I, what I last seen. Is all these baseball parks, are these going to be the girl softball?
Those are going to be girl softball.
All these girl softball.
And Robert, if I know, but at two-twenty-five, any of them can be used for baseball. Or all of them can be used for softball, you just bring the fences in.
Well, what I, what I see y'all doing, is slipping right back to the first plan, y'all already encroaching back down. Last, we heard, it was going to be the Tenth Street back. Now, it looks like, what do y'all want to do for the parking down here for these big free fields? Y'all got the parking here, or y'all, y'all going to add parking down here? Y'all already covered the ditch up, right?
Not all of it, just past the ball fields, and just past the parking lot.
What y'all going to do for parking down there, what's your plan for that?
I mean, I think that Eighth Street parking displaces most of the Tenth Street for these three fields, and the Tenth Street would still be utilized.
You going to walk from Eighth Street all the way down through Tenth to park to, to the girls?
I mean, they could, they'll still park the Tenth Street as well.
Robert, I'd do that when I go to Wal-Mart.
But we, we're not talking, we're not talking about Wal-Mart.
I know, but I don't get the fork in front of it, I'm saying.
I got one more question, Brett, Commissioner Larry. Were, were you going, interested in buying my neighbor's house for this all come about, or is that just hearsay?
Your neighbor's house?
Cliff Sandman.
Oh, yeah, a while back I was.
Well. So you didn't want a ballpark behind your house, that's really.
I owned the house with a ballpark behind it, and I enjoyed it.
Yes, this, I'm going to try to be religious as I can now. I'm not real smart, I'm not an engineer. You see what I'm saying? But this is not the place to do what y'all got in mind. There's other places, and one more thing. Getting a sixty acres joint in the city warehouse out there, right across, if you, if you put a culvert across sixty acres, getting your sixty acres jointed, you see, where ain't about eighty acres there?
I think that was for affordable housing, wasn't that the same thing that they gave us out? Where we built the affordable housing units, that was earmarked for that project for affordable housing.
When is, when y'all going to do that?
When there's a need, when we got one.
But I think that's the only thing we can put there right now.
I think that's what it's earmarked for.
When you go back to what you said, and I didn't mean to get out of hand, while ago, when you go back to what you said earlier about the lands are there, you don't have to push any trees, blah, 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 but you covering the bitches that put in the culvert, that's going to displace that, you see what I'm saying? If you look at this project compared to moves or ropes, you don't have any more money. And, you know, like I say, you don't see any paths like this built in a residential neighborhood. You go out two or three miles, anywhere you go. I don't, I don't, I don't been there, you see what I'm saying, I don't, I don't come through that. And I, that's all I got to say from now.
Thank you, Ron. Anyone else in the public?
Yes, I have one other thing.
Come on up.
I'm sorry that I get a little excited, but sometimes they're paced, don't you? I would like for you to do a study, and then next week, each and every one of you, and I'd like to see y'all work together on this. Give me a, show me a number of tournament complexes in the middle of the neighborhood.
I've got one.
That's where all the two-thirty-eight?
You go all the way to the end of the transmitter, take a left, go down a couple of blocks, take another left, go all through this residential area, and finally, there it is.
Oh, it's in the back.
I guess that's the back, I don't live there.
In other words, in other words. Oh, you know where it's at, but you've never seen it.
No, my grandson played ball there, I've seen it. Yeah, I'm, I'm aware of it.
It's in, and you're telling me it's in the neighborhood, and it's in Lynnheys?
Yes, sir, I've been there too.
All right, I want to go.
I went there to look at it.
Let me tell you something, we went, we went over on the Highland side to where your place, where your ball fields and everything are back there, the gym and all. They still need to be moving to that place. That's what you done, but I was, we was here when one lady come up and just asked for a stench to go up in there. That's why we went over there to look at it. Now, y'all need to do something that way. You need to help those people, just like you trying to pull something in here. That could be part of the tourist attraction. Got to play, all we got to do is play ball there. Very simple. And, oh, I thought the county pulled out of this.
No, they don't pull out.
That's what they told us?
No, they didn't pull out. They backed up to make, let us make the decision on what kind of plan we wanted, but they're fully, they're fully invested in this, the county is, fully.
Okay, they made it plain that this was a city project, a city project, and we are stepping back, and we'll give you that eight-hundred something, I don't know. Was that not what they said?
No, they're working with us, they're not letting us.
So in other words, let me get this straight then. As these plans change, the county is telling the city what to do to get the money. Is that what's happening?
Not really. It's got to be tourist related.
Yeah.
Get the money, it's got to be tourist related, that's the bottom line. If it's not tourist related, we don't get any money.
All right. That's, that's it, what you got to pick about? You know, and when you come in, and you sit right here, and you learn, here's a completely different, and there's always an excuse why the people did not know in advance. Same thing when we walked in over at the courthouse, when the big plan was going on. I'd have given a thousand dollars if I'd have had a picture of them faces on new people when we walked in there. when we walked in there. Who were you? Where were you? Well, we're here for the layout of the plan and everything. Oh, well, you're assuming it looks on your faces.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Mr. Langton was talking to you tonight.
I don't have anything.
All right.
I'm good to go, Mayor.
Good to go.
I want to again congratulate the baseball team. Yeah, well, that's, that's a big deal. To, I spoke to, I believe it's Wimaco Timber, and I believe, and there's some desert red easements and such along the freshwater canal ditch, and I believe they're going to want to be put on the agenda so we can work something out on getting an easement, that way they're not crossing right there to walk in. So, I'll reach out to you this week or next, when I talk more to them, but I think we can come with some type of agreement, with maybe a temporary agreement or something.
Anything else? Is it?
Don't have anything, Mayor.
I just have one thing, I'd just like to tell people that are still here what a great experience I had on the twenty-first and twenty-second of last month. I was invited to go on a leader group tour of Hold'em in Air Force Base over in New Mexico. I was the only one from Gulf County or the city to go. Most everybody else was from Bay County. But they flew us over there on a flight over. We got to watch them fuel two F-22s. That's pretty exciting. You go down in the bottom of that C-130 and lay down and just look, pull in there with that F-22 and fill them up. That was very exciting. Anyone else who got to Hold'em? We went through a whole afternoon, then a whole next day of them just showing us what it's all about, the Reaper. I thought it was a regular airplane. It's a drone. People can sit right there at Hold'em in a box, the pilot and the sensor, and kill people in Afghanistan. Nobody's in the plane. They, they, they handle it from right there in a box. And this program, I'm not sure if it's still coming to Tindall, or if it's coming to Tindall and Herbert Air Force Base within the next two years, they're going to expand that program. But I just want everybody to know, it was a great experience. I enjoyed the heck out of it. Cost me two-hundred fifty dollars. It didn't cost the taxpayers a dime. I paid everything out of my pocket because I thought it would be a great trip. It was a great trip. I just wanted to, you know, let y'all know about that trip I took. All right, that's all I have. I need a motion to adjourn.
No, no. All right.